One moment. Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
At this time, we have public speakers, we have comments at this time. Ms. Henri Jordan. And I think we do have members, I see our Commissioner Mo Ivory in the audience. Thank you for being here today. Thank you. And our county manager and other staff from Fulton County, thank you all for being here today. Ms. Henri Jordan.
In the name of the Spirit of God, everyone that's here, let your light shine before men, that they may see your good works.
Ms. Henri, one second. We need to cut your mic on. We have a new system. Please, please continue.
Give it up to the Spirit of God, everyone that's here. Let your light so shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven. Matthew 5, Chapter 16, verse. You're the light of the world, described the essential mission of the Christian to the world. Because you did not give Jesus his glory and the income to be in my hands, you reject the gift to operate. Do you desire God to prove he said it? Be ye not unequally yoked together with unbelievers? For what fellowship has righteousness with unrighteousness? And what communion has light with darkness? Second Corinthians 6, Chapter 14, verse. To enlarge the heart is to increase its capacity for sympathy and understanding. I or you can have a union with Christ's word that created the income if we seek to obey his holy word. I form the light and create darkness, make peace and create evil. I, the Lord, do all these things. Isaiah 4, the fifth, Chapter 7, verse. The phrase "I create evil" refers to physical evil or calamity rather than moral evil. God created evil so his power can stop evil. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spirits to wickedness and high pleasures. Ephesians 6, Chapter 12, verse. Wrestler use of hand-to-hand combat emphasizes the personal and individual nature of spiritual warfare. Ways against each local church and Christian. Instead, ye oppress, ye opposes principalities, rulers, powers, authorities, rulers, world rulers, spirits to wickedness, wicked spiritual beings, that is fallen angels, demons, and Lucifer himself. This is the reason we seek Jesus for help, the real power. We have no power against Satan without Jesus Christ. He is the only power above Satan. We have to fight sin in ourselves and in others through the power of Jesus Christ. Demons will flee. So I seek to obey Jesus. You also too.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jessica Corbett.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members. My name is Jessica Corbett and I'm the Director of External Affairs for Fulton County. I'm joined today, as you noted, by Commissioner Mo Ivory, who represents this part of Fulton County, our county manager and other colleagues. I'm here today to address Resolution 25R 3289 related to the Atlanta City Detention Center and its use by Fulton County. We've read through the resolution and all of us at Fulton County certainly share the concern for safety and humane treatment of detainees in the care of the Fulton County Sheriff's Office. We share those concerns and we are committed to moving forward to safer and humane jail conditions for everyone. Fulton County's use of the Atlanta City Detention Center is essential to that effort. Last year, the Fulton County Board of Commissioners committed to up to $300 million to improve conditions at the Fulton County Jail and our jail system. A firm is now in place who has begun that work. In January, the Board of Commissioners and the Fulton County Sheriff's Office entered into a consent decree with the U.S. Department of Justice to improve jail conditions. As we work to make these improvements, continued access to the Atlanta City Detention Center is more important than ever. We are, for one, seeking ways to humanely and effectively meet the needs of detainees with complex mental and physical health conditions. Access to ACDC is really critical to allow us to effectively meet those needs. In addition, as we take on that work, those capital repairs, it's important for us to have a place where we can house detainees while repairs at the primary jails are underway. Public safety is an important collaborative effort and we have enjoyed the work with the City of Atlanta to address those, making this a safer community for everyone. For example, collaborating with Councilman Hillis and the Justice Policy Board to open the new, excuse me, diversion center, which has just opened recently. And we believe that continued collaboration can help us achieve a safer community for everyone. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Devin Franklin.
Good afternoon, council persons. My name is Devin Franklin. I am Senior Movement Policy Counsel with the Southern Center for Human Rights. And I am here today to speak towards Councilman Lewis's resolution calling for the stage withdrawal of Fulton County detained persons from ACDC. The first thing that I would like to say to you all and to the public at large is that upon watching the Board of Commissioners meeting for Fulton County last week, I believe that there is some disconnect as to what the purpose of this resolution is. I'm not entirely certain, but from what I heard of that conversation, it seems that the understanding is that Councilman Lewis's legislation is an effort to prematurely terminate the IGA agreement between the city and the county. From my reading of it, that is certainly not what it is. What is clear from the legislation is that what Councilman Lewis is asking of you all is to go forward with the contract as written. Article 22 of the IGA states that a stage withdrawal conversation needs to be had before the termination of the lease, before the four-year term from Fulton County is over. I also think that there was additional confusion concerning the current impact of SB 7, State Bill 7, which seeks to make Fulton County the only county in the state of Georgia which could take over a city jail unilaterally. That, that legislation currently has not crossed over from the Senate into the House. For intents and purposes, although the language may potentially be used to be added into some other legislation, SB 7 in and of itself is dead. From this point forward, what I want for you all to think about and to consider are the conditions that are allowed to persist and exist in Fulton County and what the export of those harms could potentially mean for the City of Atlanta. In 2022, my team at Southern Center, as well as members of the Community Over Cages Coalition, warned you all that the culture of neglect and indifference at the Fulton County Jail would eventually lead to harm visiting within the walls of Atlanta City Detention Center. And we were correct, unfortunately. In that time, two individuals in Fulton County custody have died inside the walls of ACDC. And there had not been deaths previously when it was just Atlanta taking care of that building. And some of this stuff was foreseeable, but it was foreseeable until, you know, there were things that you all didn't know when you initially voted on the legislation in August of 2022. One of the most prominent things at that point in time was the disclosure of a vermin report that was learned about after the death of LaShawn Thompson. And within that vermin report, excuse me, it noted that as a result of the assessment, it found that individuals living in the housing unit where Thompson had died, 100% had either license, scabies, or both. And that more than 90% were malnourished or demonstrated significant muscle wasting. This is not a condition of the building. This is a condition of the negligent and indifferent treatment by Fulton County staff of detained persons. And we ask that you not allow it to continue to exist in the City of Atlanta.
Thank you. We have been joined by the Honorable Ishay Collins and a question or comment suggestion by the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Yes, he said my name, so I want to make sure I talk about some of this stuff. So, Mr. Franklin, I know you kept saying Councilmember Lewis's legislation, but this is Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Bakhtiari, and Councilmember Dozier, where the jail actually sits in his district. So I want to make sure we talk about all three of us, because we were able to sit down with some attorneys from, yourself included, to make sure we came up with the best resolution that we thought would give power to Article 22. It's very specific. Legislation is about Article 22 stage withdrawal. It says that strategically plan for the safe and timely transfer of temporary detainees out of ACDC. And it talks about a timeframe. So that's what this legislation actually does. And I appreciate you for talking about that. A couple more things. Part of the reason why we did this is because of funding, funding. My wife was a prosecutor of Fulton County. And so I solicited. So I understand the funding issues and I understand some of the issues they have are around funding. Every year if you watch the budget report, I hear our sheriff over there asking for more money. He's asking for more money. We hear, I'm watching the DAs ask for more money for certain things. And I'm watching the raises not happen for three, four years for people over there. I'm watching our attorneys being caught every single day, every single day, no time off. I'm watching some of the mandatory minimums. And I know that Atlanta can fix this. We don't have to be a part of that. And so management and funding. If our sheriff is, when we go through budget season over at City Council, I ask a department, what do you need? Are you sure you have enough? That's, that's the question that I ask. Our sheriff has asked for more. Every year, he's fighting for more. I'm watching the fights for the commission and the sheriff. I'm watching the fights with the, from the inside with our Superior Court justices. I'm watching the fights. So funding issues, I think the City of Atlanta Jail was the best-run jail in the state of Georgia. To see Senate Bill 7 actually happen, these are the same people that have nothing to do with Fulton County who try to take our airport, who try to take neighborhoods. They try to take a neighborhood out of our city. And so to see them try to take our jail, it's time for us to do something. So I appreciate you for this and I appreciate you for working with us.
I appreciate it. May I address one thing Councilman Lewis said is inappropriate to do at this point?
Yes, yes.
Just very briefly, you made mention of the court system where everyone is overworked. And I can strongly attest to that. I was a public defender in Superior Court, felony court, in Fulton County for 12 years. And I can tell you that a lot of the cases that I was oftentimes in court for are cases which now would be better off if persons are taken to the recently constructed diversion center. Making proper use of that facility would be wonderful. And I think that that is a thing that should also.
And also the Fulton County Behavioral Crisis Center is a great place they can take people to as soon as it opens up. So as soon as it opens up. Thank you again.
Yeah. And if Atlanta has to do anything, one thing I would note is that if you were to reference data from the current data from the Policing Scorecard, the City of Atlanta Police Department arrests more people for low-level felonies than 85% of police departments in the United States of America. That number of cases being brought into the Fulton County system is a significant reason for the overcrowding and can be addressed within the City of Atlanta and its police department. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Roberta Myers Douglas.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Roberta Myers Douglas, Vice President of State Strategy and Reentry at the Legal Action Center. We are a national nonprofit law and policy organization that fights discrimination, builds health equity, and restores opportunities for people with arrest and conviction records. We are also members of the Communities Over Cages Coalition. I'm here to request that council support the resolution to require Fulton County to submit a comprehensive plan for how they will populate ACDC and that we all begin discussing the promise and plan to repurpose ACDC, which was a major discussion that was underway before the effort to take over ACDC with the lease from Fulton County. We are, as a community, are still looking to have ACDC repurposed to serve as a social services hub for the city and for the county, the members of the county of Fulton, of Fulton County. We already see that warehousing people is not an effective approach, approach to addressing safety. The community has been against the lease from the very beginning. The lease has not been an effective measure for dealing with the inhumane treatment and mismanagement of the Fulton County Jail. Safety is never achieved by shuffling people around. We have got to commit to building the infrastructure that's needed to support addressing root causes to crime. And a few minutes ago, we talked about some of the ways that work has begun. We need to expand those efforts. There are a lot of organizations that are interested in increasing the availability of services to support the needs of people that may drive criminal behavior. But there's a huge need to support people's needs to have access to substance use and mental health treatment. We need to do more to invest in those types of services and to invest in housing. The city is dealing with a lot of issues and I'm sure you all have heard about it. You see it, you see it every day. As a community, we want to see more investments going into those types of services and care that are really going to build the community and the structure of families and the lives of children in these communities. And so I ask you to please consider asking them to submit a comprehensive plan that the public can also review and see and comment on as we go forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there are no objections from the body, we'd like to take our legislative items first.
Madam Chair, that brings us to our consent agenda. We will first take action on our favorable and unfavorable claims. We need a motion to approve the favorable claims.
Can we have a motion to approve the favorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote.
One moment. It was Lewis and then Norman. Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. Favorable claims have been approved.
Can we have a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Ishay Collins, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The unfavorable claims have been adverse. Madam Chair, that brings us to our ordinances for first reading, starting with item number one. And this is 2501181. An ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to reinstate and amend the lease agreement between the City of Atlanta and the Retail Property Trust, the Massachusetts Business Trust, to extend the term of the lease commencing retroactively on January 1, 2024, and ending on December 31, 2026, in connection with a lease of approximately 1,797 square feet of office space located at 3393 Peachtree Road, Suite 2016B, Lenox Mall, Atlanta, Georgia. Authorizing a lease amount not to exceed $1.00 per year, waiving Article 10, Section 2-1546 of the Procurement Code of the City of Atlanta, Code of Ordinances, authorizing the expenditure to be charged to and paid from 1001 General Fund, 240406, APD Police, Preinct Zone 2, 5223103, Building Rental or Lease Services, 3223000, Patrol, and for other purposes. Madam Chair, that brings us to our ordinances for second reading, starting with item number two. This is 2501135. An ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department a donation from the Urban Area Security Initiative through the Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness Department of 2, 2025 Ford F-250s and 2, 2025 Ford F-350s valued at approximately $262,254.62 to be accepted in as donation as of February 4, 2025, for use as SWAT and bomb rapid response vehicles and for other purposes.
Move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Brings us to item number three, 2501156. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to amend Chapter 10 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to permit restaurants licensed for sale of alcohol for consumption on premises to secure additional and separate licenses for the retail sale of malt beverages/beer and/or wine for off-premise consumption and to provide that any restaurants choosing to apply for and secure separate licenses for the retail sale of malt beverages/beer and/or wine for off-premise consumption shall meet the qualifications and requirements for such packaged sales licenses, including the distance requirements, and payments of all applicable license fees in addition to meeting the qualifications and requirements for licensed sale of alcohol for on-premise consumption as a restaurant. And where there shall be any conflict between such qualifications and requirements, the more stringent shall be, shall control and for other purposes.
Move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. That brings us to item number four, 2501172. An ordinance by Councilmember Howard Shook to amend Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10-94, Subsection A, Part 1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, so as to repeal the exemption from the distance requirements between the business seeking licenses to sell alcohol beverages for consumption on the premise on Peachtree Road and residences, schools, churches, libraries, parks, and other places, and for other purposes.
Moved by the Honorable Mary Norwood, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Madam Chair, that brings us to our resolutions, starting with item number five, 25R 3283. A resolution by Councilmembers Andrea Elboon, Dustin Hillis, and Michael Julian Bond to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the local, number 134 International Association of Firefighters in accordance with the Section 78-36 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and the State Firefighter Mediation Act for a term not to exceed one year and for other purposes.
Move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Brings us to item number six, 25R 3289. A resolution by Councilmembers Antonio Lewis, Liliana Bakhtiari, and Deishon Dozier calling for the initiation of planning for stage withdrawal of detained people housed at Atlanta City Detention Center under the custody of Fulton County Sheriff pursuant to relevant causes of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Atlanta and the Fulton County Sheriff and Fulton County and for other purposes.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And so to my colleagues, today, I want to make sure we can get as much support around this legislation as possible. Today, we heard that the communication from Fulton County at their commission meeting last week was that they didn't know what this legislation actually does. I think that my colleagues may support this because what this legislation is, is what we already agreed to, the staged withdrawal. So I push that we hold this legislation today.
We have a motion to hold by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote. Wait, we have a speaker? The Honorable Ishay Collins?
I just had a couple of questions about, about it, Councilman Lewis. So holding this, well, is what the additional steps would be? Is it to get more detail?
To give you just that, just that, because I, just that, to make sure that I'm able to talk to all of my colleagues to make sure that they know that this is about Article 22 and with hope that you can add something to it, because I feel good where we're going with asking them to do the staged withdrawal.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. So if it's, if possible, Jessica, I'd really be explicit about next steps. I would have really loved to have had more of the deeper information before the legislation, before this resolution was presented. So as by any chance, and I only get the IGA, what we are with that, but also some of the details, I think the data is extremely important in this case to firmly understand what the numbers of what's being housed at the Atlanta Detention Center, what those crimes are, where these cases are, because I do, because there is a lot of conversation about, you know, particular crimes and individuals that are housed here and what's not happening on Fulton County side. And with this being such a multi-level, intergovernmental piece, I think it's extremely key that we have all of the details before us. So I would, I would explicitly love to see that. I would explicitly love to see that as well. Also coming from a, you know, a defense attorney on the Fulton County side would, I think that information would be very pivotal as we consider this resolution.
That's what I feel so good about. We have a website with all those numbers on it right now.
Yeah, but for us.
So we have it. So here at City Council, they created their website for us because of this. So we have a website with the numbers, the data, the cases, the particular crimes. All that is on one website.
For the City of Atlanta, but does that include Fulton County cases and what those actions are? And they don't, because you have to get that kind of, you have to collectively work with the entity to get that information. So I do think it's important for that because it will send the impression that the Atlanta Detention Center is just housing low-level offenses when that may not be truly the picture. So I think it's extremely important for us to be transparent with the community over this, over the entire piece of this, knowing the conditions of Wright Street, you know, and I use, knowing the conditions of Wright Street, knowing the basis of this consent decree, but also what this IGA entails. So that's, that's just what I ask.
So I'll go more into detail now. So the reason, this resolution was strictly, I know it's strictly on stage withdrawal, Article 22, but if you look at Article 4, that's in the IGA, that's term, Article 5.1, termination. The Senate Bill 7 would have null and void it immediately. So the, we have all the, a lot of this information except the Fulton County side is not available to us. And I always say that my wife, being a solicitor, she's known as a progressive prosecutor, right? There's a new generation of attorneys, black women mainly, who want to be progressive prosecutors. And we And we can fix this stuff. We can't do what we've always done. I think that Fulton County, looking at the Wright Street jail, because a lot of times I talk to the sheriff, is after a kid is getting stabbed up or a mother is actually being, literally being blackmailed for funding, I send him those text messages, because I get them before him sometimes. And so I, I make sure that I'm on the ground in this as full as possible. And with my wife being a former solicitor, I made sure she's former, she's no longer there, that no, nothing can happen to her over there. But I know what was happening. I know fully what's going on over there. And so I feel good about this resolution, which just talks about what was in the I G A. I just want to hold true to the lease ending like we said. And so we're holding this legislation so that we can get this out, but it's in there. And I, I think at the last council meeting, we've been talking to the attorneys on the other side, some unbiased folks who be giving us a lot of information. So I feel good about this.
We have a motion on the floor. Please open the vote.
Can we repeat the second, or please?
The Honorable Mary Norwood.
Vote is open. Five yays, zero nays. The item is held in committee. Next, that brings us to item number seven. This is twenty five R three three one six. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Ann O'Connell. The City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number twenty four M S two one seven 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 one pending in the Magistrate Court of Fulton County in the amount of one thousand nine hundred fifty nine dollars and fifty cents. Authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from one zero zero one General Fund, Center Number two zero zero one zero one, nondepartmental account five two one two zero zero five litigation expenses, and Functional Activity Number one five one two zero 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 accounting, and for other purposes.
Move approval? Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. That brings us to item number eight. This is twenty five R three three one seven. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an agreement for an R F P number listed herein for A P D Systems Analytics with Purging Technologies Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department for a term of three years with two one-year renewal options with Public Safety and Community Violence Reduction Grant funding in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents annually. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and Account Number listed herein, and for other purposes.
Move approval? Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The item favorable. Madam Chair, we have nothing coming off of hell today. Therefore, this concludes our legislative agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. We will now go to our presentations, reports, and updates. Our first presentation will be the Atlanta Police Department Crime Statistics.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Boone, and all honorable committee members. I am Deputy Chief Princina Span, the Deputy Chief over our Criminal Investigative Division. So before you, you have the Group A Crimes, homicide, rape, ag assault, robbery, burglary, motor vehicle theft, theft from motor vehicle, shoplifting, and all other larceny. We're down in all categories with the exception of all other larceny, aggravated assault, and rape. And those are just minor upticks in those categories. Overall, we remain down by thirteen percent. I do want to highlight a couple of great arrests that the officers made last week. We had a suspect who was targeting different people for their vehicles, carjacking two individuals, as well as robbing someone by firearm and actually discharged that weapon in at nine oh six R D A, which is our Dollar Tree there, eleven eighty eight R D A, and eight ninety seven Mitchell Street. We were able to arrest this subject. He's known as sixty-six-year-old Willie McKay, and he is currently in Fulton County Jail. In addition to that, I know that you all have seen the videos circulating for street racers on Browns Mill Road, and a lot of people misunderstood and assumed that that Browns Mill Road fell on the City of Atlanta's jurisdiction, when in fact, it was Browns Mill and Klondike, which was located in DeKalb County. However, we still set a precedence here. When we do see street racers, our officers are deployed and our investigators work very hard to make sure that we identify those individuals and bring them to justice. And that is all I have for the mail. I'll take any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions from the body? No questions or concerns? No questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please give our regards to Deputy Chief Jason Smith. Let him know that we are praying for him and we are wishing him well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, the Office of the City Solicitor, Raines Carter.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman Andrea Boone, and to all members of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I am Raines Carter, City Solicitor, and it is my absolute pleasure to be able to present our quarterly report to you today. Okay, thank you. Okay, so to the right. Okay, thank you. Our agenda for today, we have some metrics for you related to courtrooms, specifically our High Intensity Traffic Division that's presided over by Chief Judge Ward, and of course, our Code Enforcement Court. We'll also give an update regarding our top twenty-five charges that come in through the Department of Corrections in terms of arrests. We have a breakdown for you also of reckless driving and speeding charges per A P D zone, and also an update in terms of code enforcement and the mayor's initiative of safe and secure housing. And what we will feature today is our community outreach. I have with me Senior Counsel Holla Carey, who will present that portion of our presentation, basically giving a good wrap-up of what we were able to accomplish in two thousand and twenty-four. Of course, our High Intensity Traffic Court deals with the serious types of traffic violations that plague us from day to day, aggressive driving, fleeing and eluding, reckless stunt driving, reckless driving, laying drag. You just heard from A P D about racing, and of course, speeding. If you take a look in terms of our last quarter for two thousand and twenty-four, you see that with October, our metrics are pretty much similar to what we experienced earlier part of last year. The overwhelming majority of those violations that were dealt with in terms of Judge Ward's court were the speeding cases, the only other one that made double digits in terms of October was the reckless driving cases. November speeding cases again, but if you notice that the reckless driving cases dropped down to single digit, but then there's an increase there with the speeding cases. And then, of course, we closed out the year on a similar vein with there being eighty percent again with speeding violations that are being dealt with and reckless driving coming in at nine percent. Now, of course, we get updated statistics from our Department of Corrections in terms of the top twenty-five charges for which people are physically arrested. And overwhelmingly, it continues to be driving with a license that's suspended or revoked when people are stopped or pulled over by the police and they're driving with a suspended license. Of course, we have D U I cases, and as you can see, even included within that top twenty-five, although they're few in number, it's still, we have people that are still dealing with seatbelt violations, and also pedestrians walking in the roadway. So we continue to have those types of issues in addition to our disorderly conduct type of cases that come to us on a daily basis. For October, again, overwhelmingly, you have the driving with suspended license. I believe there were about a hundred and forty arrests for that particular month. Similar, again, with November, that same pattern continues with the driving with suspended revoked license. And then also December, the same, the same pattern that continues with those charges. Okay. Next, what we did for you, because we had received the request, is to start breaking down the reckless and speeding charges. And we also have, and I don't have it for public view, but we also have locations of these traffic stops, which I will provide to the committee, and I will also send by email to each committee member of some of the locations where we're having these problems. When you take a look at it in terms of a breakdown by zone, you may notice that there appears in October to be, through December for that whole period, to be a high number in terms of Zone Six as compared to many of our other zones. Zone Four basically had our lowest numbers in terms of reckless driving and speeding. Now I'll turn to our courtroom metrics in terms of our Code Enforcement Court. Okay. And of course, this includes our violations that we deal with on a daily basis, fire code, erosion control, business license cases, alcohol violations, zoning. And then our civil court process, of course, is our housing code enforcement. And we have a few things that take place in terms of driving type of violations with valet, airport, and we have D P W violations. Again, in October of two thousand and twenty-four, sixty-one percent of our violations, of course, were our civil code violations. And these are our normal violations that we see with multifamily units, single-family dwellings, and some commercial establishments. In November, you may notice that it shrunk down a little, but it did so because there was increased enforcement in terms of our business license cases. And Mr. Lawrence Davis and his staff do a wonderful job at bringing forth our business license violations. And as you know, those things can be seasonal. And so we're working through many of the issues that we need to, to try to make sure that we have more efficient enforcement in those areas. And you'll see the same thing in December. If you notice, it rose by forty-six percent. So again, I want to commend his department for the wonderful enforcement that they're doing. Okay, next, I'll give a brief update on the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. First of all, I want to do what I always do, and that is thank Mayor Dickens and his administration for allowing us to be a part of this initiative. This was something that the council was able to put in place the latter part of two thousand and twenty-three. Two thousand and twenty-four was our first full calendar year of going through the initiative. You may know that this was started in response to the Forest Cove crisis. And this has been an interdepartmental effort with the Solicitors' Office, the Law Department, Atlanta Police Department, Code Enforcement, City Planning, and other city agencies. We also coordinate with external agencies, and especially those that provide subsidies for properties that are multifamily. And our partners include, of course, Atlanta Housing Authority, Invest Atlanta, D C A, and HUD. Last year, we participated in over nineteen joint inspection details. There were a few smaller details, but these were our large full-force details with A P D Code Enforcement and other properties. The cases which is Safe and Secure Housing Initiative come to municipal court through the civil code violations. We have many partners that are working with us that help us with multifamily dwellers, single-family dwellers, and other types of violations. And if you may notice, there is a focus to get at corporate ownership. Because of the code changes that took place a few years ago, we're trying to keep people from hiding behind the corporate veil so that we can bring them into court and make them accountable for this process. We had over three hundred thousand dollars in civil penalties that were collected from some of the top fifteen multifamily dwellings that took, that took place last year. And we're continuing to work on those things as we expand into other, other areas. Now, I will still be here and be available for any questions or concerns that you have, but I would like to return, turn the remainder of the presentation over to Ms. Holla Carey so that she can give you some updates and enlighten you on some of the things that we're looking at in terms of our Community Prosecution Division. And as always, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Good afternoon, Chair Boone, Vice Chair Hillis, Councilmember Norwood, and Ms. Collins. It's good to see you all this afternoon. My name is Holla Carey, and I am Senior Counsel in the City of Atlanta Solicitors' Office. As you know, we have been engaged in community outreach on behalf of our office. We find that community outreach helps us to be preventive in nature instead of merely reactive. It is, it is very important to prosecute cases, but it's just as important to prevent cases from actually happening. And that's what community outreach seeks to do. Our Senior Citizen Public Safety Event on November nineteenth was at West Hunter Baptist Church. This was done with Councilmembers Dozier and Bond, and it was very well-received. We had a good showing for that. In December sixth, we had another Senior Citizen Public Safety Event, and this one was with Councilmembers Boone and Bond, and another very good showing. Thank you for your partnership, Chair Boone. We also had in December our Fourth Annual D U I Enforcement Training. And essentially, what we, having worked in prosecution for D U I, we determined that it would be good to have in-house training. And we work with the Training Academy, the A P D Training Academy, in order to better train our officers in D U I detection and, and also our prosecutors and investigators. And as you can see over here, some of the training included the walk and turn and one-legged stand, and essentially, they have, they were provided with goggles in order to mimic drivers who were under the influence of drugs or alcohol at different levels. We had about seventy attendees for that one, so that was very well-received as well. We also work with the mayor's office where we can to assist in outreach. This was an event that Mayor Dickens requested help with for the wills, senior wills legacy. And essentially, we helped draft estate planning and wills for seniors, and that was over at the C T Martin Rec Center. We also believe that a cleaner community helps with code enforcement violations and to boost community morale and appearance. And we did so on November sixteenth with Councilwoman Overstreet in the N P U P District. And here are just some pictures from that day. As I said, we also assist the mayor's office with some of the other events that they may have, including the Christmas outreach events, both the Angel Tree, as well as with Maximum Impact Love. And we also wanted to honor Councilman Bond's four-year collaboration with HelloFresh, where we did food distribution events for- where we did food distribution events for people who have food insecurity. And that will be resuming again in April. So we're looking forward to assisting with that. And again, here are some of the food distribution events that we've worked on with Councilwoman Boone, as well as Councilman Bond. And we have, in the past, also worked with Councilman Lewis on these various food drives. These are some of our partners that we have collaborated with. We have some upcoming events, one with, in Councilman Hillis's district, and that will be April twenty-fifth. It'll be a Senior Citizen Public Safety Event at New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church that will be in collaboration with Councilman Hillis, as well as Councilman Amos and Councilman Bond. Some upcoming events that I'd like to bring to your attention. In March, we will be doing a cleanup event with Councilwoman Overstreet. That'll be March twenty-ninth. We are doing some work with Sarah Smith Elementary School Career Day, and that will be March thirty-first. In April, we will be assisting the mayor with the 404 Day with Councilman Amos, Westside Day at Westside Park. Of course, the food distribution drives with Councilwoman Boone and Bond. And we'll have another Senior Citizen Public Safety Event, as I indicated, with Councilman Hillis and Bond. In May, we have another event for senior citizens at, in West Buckhead at Corso, and that was requested by the Mayor's Office, as a matter of fact, this morning. And that's all I have for you. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
And you just said there was a, you got a request from the Mayor's Office about, what was that one?
There is a request for Corso, which is an assisted or senior living facility in the West Buckhead area on Howell Mill.
Yeah.
And essentially, they have been having issues with cyber and telemarketing security, which our Senior Citizen Public Safety Events cover. As you, as you know, you've attended ours in the past. And so that is scheduled right now for May ninth.
May ninth, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions or concerns? I would like to personally thank you all for the support that you give the community events. We are getting ready to start midnight basketball again, and I know that your staff, Mr. Carter's staff, will be out in full force. And just thank you for all that you all do for the citizens, especially those golden citizens that show up with issues at the court, whether it be a parking ticket, code enforcement, or a traffic violation. Thank you for your compassion.
And thank you for letting us partnership with you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, the Honorable Dustin Hillis.
Thank you. My questions are for Solicitor Carter. So, Solicitor Carter, thanks for the presentation. On your next quarterly, I'll just ask for quite a bit more information on your code enforcement process and progress, especially since this council was not informed, but a unilateral decision was made to take all housing court cases and sit up through the administrative in-rim process to the judicial in-rim process. And historically, at least in my experience, that's been bad news because that means process or cases were just going to sit for years. It's been that way for a number of years where your LLC code enforcement would just send you through the judicial process, but it would get to those Solicitor's Office and seemingly just sit. And then if it's set long enough, they'd run it through the in-rim process. And I guess we're not going to have that, that option any longer. So, given that change was made by the city attorney, I would just like a lot more information about that, that process now, how it's changed, have you brought on more staff to handle that? Just what I'm seeing on this one page is, is not really what level of detail I'd like to see on, on code enforcement, given it's such a hot issue in, in the city of Atlanta. And not just, and there is the page that has the graph, but that doesn't really, it tells us percentages, that's not telling us raw numbers. So, and not just the number of cases you take to court, but we also would like to know those outcomes. How many were thrown out? Why were they thrown out? How many clean and close orders did your team get from court? How many demolition orders did your team get from court, et cetera? And we'd like to see that in your next presentation, but if you have any input now, I'd appreciate that as well.
We, we most certainly will, will get all of that information to you. I don't have any issue with getting it to you before our next presentation, but also make it a part of our next presentation. And we will be working closely with the code enforcement, the APD, city planning, the Law Department, and the administration to make sure that we get you a full picture of the strategies that will be moving forward, that would include judicial in-rim, but it would also include blight tax and some of the other tools that have been brought to our attention. So I will pull together a full report for, for you.
Thank you, sir.
Solicitor Carter, could you tell us a little bit about what the in-rim review board, what would their responsibilities be now?
I am, I am not sure, but I'll get that information for you in terms of continuing responsibilities with regard to the in-rim review board. And also, I will work to, I, I think it would be good for you all to see a flow chart that would show both processes. And I don't have any problem with pulling that information together for the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I'll coordinate with the Law Department and with city planning to get flow charts so that you might be able to look at the processes.
Thank you, Solicitor Carter. Do we have any questions or concerns for Solicitor Carter? Solicitor Carter, thank you. On behalf of the citizens, we have many seniors that come through your court, and you all have been very helpful to them, and we appreciate the compassion that you all have had for those that are suffering in southwest and northwest Atlanta. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thanks to you. You all give us the opportunity to, to serve. You all listen to us, you all provide the resources, and we appreciate what you do for us.
Welcome, welcome.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kenneth Days. I'm the Director and Chief Public Defender for the City of Atlanta's Office of the Public Defender. And today's presentation will predominantly talk about some of the, provide an overview predominantly of, of our activities since January one of this year. This first slide shows a synopsis of really where we are on the numbers of cases that we've handled. What our case volume has been, at a total number of a little bit over a thousand cases and nine hundred and thirty cases closed. And of those nine thirty, some of those also incorporate cases from twenty twenty-four. But we are, of course, anticipating a significant increase as we move towards the, the end of our fiscal year, because there's always just an uptick in the number of cases that are appointed to us seemingly as the months get a little bit, the weather gets a little bit nicer. For whatever reason, we tend to have a substantial increase in, in cases over the spring and summer months. This is a overview of the numbers that we've experienced since January one. Our in-custody cases, which equals a number of arrests for various citations, for traffic ordinances, DUIs, and of course, city ordinance violations that are alleged. We had forty, four hundred and twenty-nine of those cases that were opened, two hundred and ninety-five that have been closed to date. The Padilla advisories are essentially one hundred, represent one hundred and ten cases that share potential immigration consequences. And we're fortunate as an office to have a few of our attorneys in the office that are actually experts in providing what's known as a Padilla advisory. And what that is, is the United States Supreme Court mandated some years back that if you are providing defense for any individual, if there becomes an immigration consequence that you don't otherwise explain to that client, all of the potential adverse consequences from an immigration standpoint, then that attorney would be effectively held responsible and as a malpractice standard. So it's critical for us to have people on our staff that can give qualified advice when we do have individuals that have, are in custody for a potential immigration consequence worthy allegation. Since January one, we've also made five hundred and ten referrals for unhoused population of people that we have been appointed to. This is important because this represents us reaching out to potentially, well, mostly third-party service providers for things such as shelter, or transportation, or mental health treatment, and, and other things that you can think of that our unhoused population would need. In addition to that, our in-house public defender's team of advocates and social workers have also made one hundred and forty-four service referrals. So that's effectively our social work team and client advocates assisting in one hundred and forty-four instances. We've also had over twenty-five hundred evidence requests coming from our staff. In addition to, of those twenty-five hundred evidence requests, there have been ten thousand five hundred and sixty-nine of those have been video requests. While that obviously is an extremely large number, it gives an indication of, of just how hard our staff works, particularly our investigator team and our attorney team, because they actually have to view all of those videos. You may have several videos that tell the story of one incident, but that's a lot to have to go through, and it represents a significant portion of the work that we do that's not court-related necessarily. For our DUI cases, I, I know this committee has, has often heard me talk about the impact that we have statewide on just the sheer volume of cases that we handle in any given month. Our numbers are actually decreasing, which is an exceptional thing for this. Since January one, we've opened forty-five cases, closed out a hundred and thirty. Typically, we have had about sixty percent of, of a daily docket for DUI defense, which, which again is, is a staggering amount. But now we've sort of gotten the backlog with the assistance of the other judicial actors. A lot of the DUI case backlog has diminished, and we're back down to what I would consider a reasonable number of cases. However, we do expect an upward trend in the coming months, usually as economic situations get a little tighter, if the job market is not as strong as it, as it tends to be, there ends up being a lot of anxiety and depression, which tends to mean that we can expect a increase in DUI representation. And because economic conditions may not be as favorable as we'd like, that also means that people are not going to be in a position to hire private counsel. So we do tend to see our, our numbers increase. So we're sort of preparing for that now with our staff. But this is the, the good side of what we do, some of our success stories. The first you'll see here is an individual that we represented that was cited for urban camping. This is an individual we worked with for several months, most of two thousand twenty-four. This case was ultimately resolved in two thousand twenty-five. But then that was through the support of our office and the trust that we provide in reconnecting this particular individual with assistance that they had been receiving previously from a service provider and other organizations that were trying to get this person stable. But I think, you know, with, with some, some little bit of tough love and, and guidance from us, we were able to get this person reconnected to services. This individual is now stable and living in supportive housing that we largely helped to reintegrate with. The best part of this for me is seeing this email that we received from the client, because now the client is actually employed and was able to send a, a thank you email, not forgetting us, because we do do follow-up periodically with individuals with these issues. And this person was able to email us back. So that, that gave us a, a large sense of appreciation for this person's appreciation. We've also, in the, in the past three months, assisted a client that suffered from a stroke and was unable to actually even complete their case or even offer any type of assistance in their ongoing code compliance case. But our staff was able to go in and, and reconnect them with some family members, also help them get connected to some service providers that could offer some of those, some assistance to this individual, both with the, the medical situation and also the issue with the code enforcement proposed violation. So now the house is in compliance. Unfortunately, the individual's circumstance medically has not changed. But what we have been able to do in connecting them with their family, reconnecting them with their family, is really protecting this particular senior legacy resident, protecting their asset, which is of, of course, of utmost importance, because had we not been able to act as a liaison in this capacity, this legal outcome could have further exacerbated the conditions of, of a medical emergency and, and made their life, you know, way more unstable. So this was a, a very much a success story for us. The last one is one we, we see pretty regularly, unfortunately, and, and that is just individuals not having the means or the wherewithal to understand navigating, you know, government bureaucracy. In, in this situation, we had a client that was cited for junk vehicles in the yard, and the reason why the cars were considered junk vehicles was they did not have the mandated Department of Revenue sticker on the back. They were not insured. And the reason for that was the client's mother had died several months before, and this particular individual just did not know how to, to make the transfer from a deceased relative, make the transfer of the title. So of course, our staff assisted in walking this person through that process, and in the process, provided for them to now be able to either drive these cars legally, have them insured, prevent a traffic violation, or sell them, you know, for, for some type of money, their value, all community stabilization. Of course, our office is very big on outreach. It comprises a lot of what we do. This past three months, this past quarter, we've had approximately thirty-five outreach events so far. This was a Know Your Rights presentation that we did at Mars Brown College. What we have found is that our city youth are potentially the most vulnerable during a police encounter. So for us, what we, what we aim to do by these Know Your Rights presentations is to try to provide a non-adversarial response, so that if there is a police encounter, then the individual who is encountering police does not automatically look at that and escalate that situation in an adversarial way. That provides for officer safety, but it also provides for the citizen's safety. And so there is a, a lot of power and knowledge, and so these have been very successful programming that we do with multiple organizations that we have done for several years, but this was one of the ones that we recently did at Mars Brown College. Chris One Eighty, I worked there, and the At Promise Center has been going on for several years. We've, we do a twice monthly, our staff does a twice monthly healthy cooking class. And at this point, our staff, I believe, are really regulars at the At Promise Center in providing not only healthy cooking opportunities, but also a, a healthy mentorship program as well. It, it goes beyond the cooking, I think, in, in more sort, more so towards the mentorship piece, because we are, the staff is still Because we are, the staff is still very much in contact with a lot of these individuals as they mature and become more productive members of our, of our city. This last December, we had a partnership with Fathers Movement Incorporated. Fathers Movement Incorporated provides a comprehensive parenting and relationship program. And they also provide support for accessed, fathers' access to their children and also assistance with custody. And so our department sponsored four single fathers back in December and their families and provided gifts of clothing and toys and other essentials. And we also hosted a dinner on that date, which has actually become a tradition for our department with different organizations year over year. So what's next for our department? One is going to be an expansion of our partnership with Atlanta House Proud and those identified MPUs that specifically we have an increased number of code enforcement violations. What we want to do is target those legacy homeowners to be proactive in some of the violations that were preventative and potential code enforcement violations. And we also want to offer a great deal more legal assistance to them. Because again, preventive, preventive measures are usually a lot less costly than having someone cycle through the system. The other issue that we're going to really promote for our office is be more aggressive about cross-training our staff to align with our increase in caseload. Every week over week, we're seeing a small increase in our in custody population as well as our just overall total numbers are increasing substantially. So we want to be able to offer our same level of service without any, you know, diminution in that service delivered to our clients. So that's what you can expect next presentation on, on the expansion of these opportunities. And with that, I will happily answer any questions that you may have.
The Honorable Michael Julian Bond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Day. Another great presentation and my compliments to your staff and for the work that they do. But of course, I'm going to always ask you about the program to give legal advice to those who might be facing eviction. As, can you tell us how that's going and what's some of the progress there?
It's becoming a little bit more difficult. And that is because we don't have enough dedicated staff to that. But of course, the individuals that cycle through the courthouse with those as ancillary issues is increasing. I don't think I have to tell this body the issue with housing in this city. I mean, it is an issue. There are a lot of renters. There are a lot of folks that have just general questions. Some of the major nonprofits that deal in this space, a lot of their organization revolves around volunteers. If they don't have enough volunteers, then a lot of those cases go unresolved, a lot of questions go unanswered. There's, quite frankly, there's just not enough resources. And because we don't have any dedicated staff members to this, you know, we're oftentimes trying to kind of pull somebody at a reasonable hour and a date and time that they're not in court to be able to, you know, respond to some citizens' inquiries. A lot of these issues, as we've spoken about before, can be resolved sometimes with a phone call. But you really just quite honestly have to have the manpower to make those phone calls to try to help assist in resolving some of these issues. And that's where we're lacking. I mean, so we just need more staff to provide more man-hours to field more calls. Because the calls are coming in, but it's just trying to get back to people as, in a timely manner before they end up in a court situation or, you know, when it's still resolvable with a landlord would be much more beneficial. Because quite frankly, they just, a lot of the nonprofits just don't have, they don't have the number of volunteers that they need to assist with the amount of volume that this problem unfortunately presents.
Well, that's unfortunate to hear. Let me ask you, this proposal came out of the outgrowth of the Public Defender's Office being authorized to aid those who might face deportation. So is that also suffering under the same conditions?
Somewhat, yes, it is, it is. Again, it's just more volume than we have the capacity to handle. And right now, our biggest concentration from, from that standpoint is our Padilla advisories. A number of those individuals being sort of flagged by the jail, if you will. And so it's our obligation then to put that resource on clients that are now in custody that will certainly have potential consequences. And so that, though, just doing the analysis for the appropriate advising of clients that are housed in the municipal court or the Atlanta City Detention Center is a severe strain on our staff. And again, there are not a lot of other organizations, a lot of nonprofits that were also assisting in that space. Funding has dried up or they just no longer exist based on some of the current movement of our federal legislation.
Well, I guess the $100, $100,000 question is how much more staff do you need?
You know, that's, it's sort of a loaded question. I'm hesitant to respond because I think numerically, we have always used particular attorney staff in multiple capacities. So for instance, for this, we would have, say, an attorney that is assigned to a courtroom, but this would also be something they would do. But that person would be assigned to a courtroom that may not be historically a high-volume courtroom. So they would have an opportunity to do this. And you would sort of get a two-for-one for someone that could both, you know, offer both services to the city. And that's what we've always done with all of these, all of our, all of our individuals on our staff assist in everything that we do. But there are some experts, if you will, that can, you know, target clients that come in with a specific need. And in this instance, you know, we do have attorneys that have an inordinate amount of experience in sort of landlord tenant issues and have been trained by some of these nonprofit organizations that specifically assist individuals with those, with those types of cases. And so they are able to do the work. But if they're also having to cover multiple courtrooms, that presents a problem. And so, you know, as our case volume goes up, I'm always in need of attorney staff. I think as we have more attorney staff, it again, gives us the opportunity to offer that, that sort of deep level of service where you don't get any type of recidivism. We can be proactive and we can also assist some of the other departments and issues that they have. So, you know, for us, how I see this issue is if we are able to assist in, in sort of the preventive eviction by having an attorney make a phone call to a landlord and just having a conversation, then we've stabilized that house. And that's also not somebody that we need to find housing for down the road. Or maybe we're creating a situation where now this individual becomes unhoused, which is more expensive on taxpayer dollars. So the way I see it is that preventive measure of just having somebody's time to be able to make a phone call can potentially save, you know, a litany of resources from having to be expended just on a phone call or two. And so I'm always in need of more people that can do that. How many that is, I mean, I don't want to be, you know, presumptuous and give a number that's not accurate.
Well, let me ask you this. Is there a calculation or formula, given the size or the amount of courtrooms, how many, how many solicitors that need to be there? How many public defenders and so forth need to be in those courtrooms?
I mean, there are national recommendations as to the number of cases that we handle versus the, you know, the size of our office and support staff, and the number of attorneys and the number of support staff. Those we can, we can provide for you. I think I provided this body those in the past. I can certainly get you more up-to-date numbers to give you those specific numbers. Public defense has also changed a little bit in that it is not just going to court and that's it. The definition of public defense now involves sort of this holistic client center representation that we've been doing for the past, you know, 12 years. We started out understanding that that was the future of public defense, and now it's become an expectation. So every public defender office in the nation is now expected to provide this level of service delivery. It is no longer acceptable as an industry to just represent your client in court and do nothing else. It's now expected that you also have to be in a position to provide these other services because otherwise you're not really protecting your client's interest.
Right.
So for us, more is always better. I think it's going to always be more until we can virtually put ourselves out of business. More is always going to be a necessity, especially if we intend to, you know, give the same level of service.
Well, thank you for that. If you can reshare that information, I think that'll be helpful. And I think that perhaps at some level, there probably needs to be a conversation about perhaps a recapture program for your department so that, you know, in much the way we do with APD, and I think Corrections has done some of this, that perhaps you can have some individuals that might have retired or have gone on to other things come back and fill the gap of the extra services for your department, which presumably would be cheaper than providing you a new body. But I'm in support of you getting new bodies also. But thank you. If you can check, because I don't want to dominate the conversation.
We have actually invoked that in years past. There have been some pros and cons to that. But we also, you know, one of the things we recognize too is that we're also competing with surrounding jurisdictions. So there are other things that I think, you know, to be fair, the mayor's administration's done an incredible job that we have not necessarily seen this, this much support in the past with sort of understanding our needs and working with us to make sure that we're aligning salaries and also doing what we can to recruit and retain. So we're moving the needle in the right direction. But, you know, you asked a question. I'm going to answer it. Is it, we still need more. And even understanding those things that we've been able to be successful with, we have to just stay vigilant and continue to do what we can.
Okay. Well, we're here to help you do, help you do what you can. So yeah, if you can share the information, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Most certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. I would like to ask law to opine on that.
Yes, good afternoon. Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. I did want to ensure that it's properly clarified that in accordance with the state's gratuities clause in the Constitution, as well as in 2100761, which is an ordinance sponsored by Councilmember Bond concerning the provision of legal advice and counsel or any other such services regarding evictions by the Public Defender's Office, that any, any of that such service provision or donation of services would have to flow through a 501(c)(3) charitable organization in order to be subject to the exemption to the gratuities clause in the seen manner as anticipated in 25R3223, which is currently tabled at full counsel, which proposes a partnership with the Atlanta, or excuse me, a donation to the Atlanta Volunteer Lawyers Foundation for such eviction services. So this, just to clarify, it's not anything that we can just have the public defenders do on their own. They can only do this through a partnership with a 501(c)(3).
Well, if I could just respond, no, I understand that as the author of the legislation. But what has clearly been stated here today is that regardless of how it is done, they need more people, right? And so if there are other ways to find or to help them have the capacity to work with others or nonprofits, then I think it's our obligation, because now it is the published expectation for the service, that it's our obligation to try to enable them to do as much as they can with whichever partners they have.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there are no more questions, I'll...
Are there any more questions from the body? Thank you for this very well-done presentation and for your work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If there are no more questions or concerns from the body in announcements, we would like to also offer our condolences to the family of Lamar Parks. We funeralized his mother, who was a valued member of this City of Atlanta family for nearly 30 years. Olivia Parks Woods was the first African-American clerk for the City of Atlanta. Please keep that family in your prayers, the family of Olivia Parks Woods. Mr. Bond.
Yes, I have an announcement that on April 2nd, next Wednesday, at Ben Hill United Methodist Church, the food distribution program that used to be the HelloFresh program will be reborn. And so we want to make the public aware that the time will be the same, the date will be the same.